Motion to open the meeting.
Okay, I'm making a motion to open the meeting at seven forty-three P M.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that Walter Sarumson will be a few minutes late, he'll be on his way. Alright, upon opening the mail, we've gone through all that and we've got some sign offs. The first sign off is on Noah Estates, on a parcel that we had a covenant on. And everything's been met years ago, but they were selling one of the houses and they noticed this was still on file. So, we need to vote to sign off on that. All the money's been paid, the road's been built for years and it's accepted too. So, there's no reason why we shouldn't sign off on that. Do you wanna read off the house numbers until we have it on the record? Lot number?
Book and page, you want the book and page?
Yeah.
Book two, four, four, nine, two, page five, four, four. And that's the covenant. And then the agreement, which was later, is book two, four, seven, one, one, page four, three, four.
I need a motion to release the covenant.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we need to get that back to the lawyer when Walter comes, his signature's on there. We can send back the proper paperwork. Alright, any other sign offs here?
You talking about Fornes or?
Yeah, Fornes or?
The two thirty-one School Street, I think you have it on your journey.
What's it?
Two thirty-one.
Oh yeah, uh, School Street? Yeah, okay, that's, that's fine, it's a little more than just a sign off though.
Oh, sorry. Is there any else?
No, there's no. We got a couple of calendars and a couple cards from different engineers if anyone needs a date plan in the mail. Alright, this is a lot line change on School Street and Center Street to build a duplex.
Number two thirty-one School Street, which is lot thirty-four of lot six, parcel six. And we'd like to split into two parcels, one of the existing house on it, which will have a hundred and sixty-nine feet of frontage, and fifty-nine thousand square feet, which is almost double what it needs. An area that has the width and setbacks to the existing house. There's an existing garage or barn, I guess, I don't know. Garage is gonna come down, it's gonna be, it's very old and kinda...
That's kinda flat falling down.
So, rather than try to repair it, we'll set back to it, actually move the garage on, on the plan and not have it be raised, so it can come down. And the new lot will be lot six B, which will be closing here. Typical footprint for a two-family dwelling with the circles associated with that. We did test bits in the front and in the back of this lot, and they're both acceptable, up grade, six minutes an inch, which is pretty good. We have forty-seven thousand square feet for that, we need forty thousand for duplex, we have a little extra. And two hundred and five feet frontage, which is five feet more than we need. That's twenty-five feet on School Street, we actually have eighty-nine feet on Center Street as well, but we do have twenty-five feet on School Street. So, they both conform to the required zoning, and the circles are on there, topo, CBA is all, it's all CBA, it's all hundred percent CBA, forty-seven thousand square feet on lot six B and fifty-nine thousand on lot six A. I don't think there's any, it's on town water, so we have, proposed town water actually, is available.
And the driveway will be on School Street?
Um, I don't know, is that?
Center Street, I think.
If I could come in Center Street, we can.
That would be better.
Do we do garage under in the back, come in off of Center Street, do garage under in the back?
That was what we preferred, grade wise, it works nice for garage under and also gets across School Streets, so you don't have to be able to traffic on School Street.
Yeah, oh, that sounds good.
So, that's what we plan on doing. Otherwise, everything's conforming, so.
I, no, I didn't know what, it's two hundred feet, right?
It's my four, 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 it's, I have that on the chart up here as well.
And then forty thousand?
Forty thousand, maybe we'll, we have forty-seven, so. It's thirty thousand per single family and thirty thousand for duplex.
Do you have a, do you have a man here?
I have. Where the, in the subdivision, is it on? The intersection?
No, it's on the other one.
Just to make sure because we went through this.
Yep.
Plus, we'll need the fee sheet too. I meant to bring a couple copies of the fees.
Residential district, yeah.
I'll be.
We'll only do it, yeah.
What is the property drive easement?
Proposed driveway, driveway right now is very, very he, kinda crosses, it's a loop, it's a circular driveway. We just maintain the driveway where it is for the house, it's in a little, twenty-four, even, little triangle, even, just so you can keep the house driveway where it is.
So, wouldn't that reduce the content then?
Does that reduce the frontage when you have it, I didn't think it affected the frontage, I mean, still, this frontage is just, but you guys have the right to use it, as an easement, to cross over.
It'll be on both deeds, that the, you know?
Yeah, it'll be, when you come into on them, it would be a benefit of this guy, so.
Right.
But the frontage is still, I mean, it's twenty-five, he still owns it, he's just, he has the right to cross over. It's kinda like a utility, isn't it?
Yeah, as long as it's on a deed, I think that would come in that.
It's forty thousand two hundred. So, what's the address?
It's two thirty-one School Street, existing house.
Bob? Look, you know, property on Governor's driveway and then it was parked off because the two neighbors were feud, and you don't want to ever get one? Rest of the, uh, Governor's Row.
Karen's street, well, yeah.
I wonder if that ever could happen, maybe that wasn't on a deed.
No, there was no easement.
No easement, okay, now this should come in.
And there's no evidence on the site, there is a Aliway Brook, which is two hundred feet away from the existing property, so there'll be no conservation issues.
Conservation, summed up, still on the bucket.
Any other questions from the board members?
Well, just setbacks are the same and...
Alright, what, what form do you have there?
It's that Fornet. And that's your Fornet A one.
Well, I'm not your pen.
Somewhere in here. You should bring one.
That setbacks are right there.
Yeah.
The new property line?
So, this town before, driveway is in the neighbor's property?
What?
This driveway is in the neighbor's property?
Shouldn't they?
In the new house, that's a, that's a...
Well, they, they have one of these right now.
I just worked with the new property line, that's it.
But the, but the old bond.
They used those to get to that, and that's where they park, I mean...
Yeah, driveway in the left hand side from the existing house.
So, you're not, you're not gonna traverse over the other lot, correct?
Um, the driveway, the pavement's gonna stay there, so if they can, yeah.
Crosses over.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, these are the things that just get in trouble all the time. I mean, I'd almost rather see it disappear.
Take it out.
Yeah, please. And next thing you know, it's like, you know, you get into trouble and it's just not worth it.
So, if that's the case, then you wouldn't need the easement, so you don't, you don't have to use it, it's just, it doesn't happen, so.
Get it right up tomorrow, take it out of there.
You might just wanna put driveway right here, that's great.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when this bond, I had the driving, it couldn't be done there anymore.
Yeah.
Put a wall over there.
Yeah, that'd be better.
Give it a little more separation, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what Bob was saying, asking me about, because there's a few towns. You know, all of a sudden, I'm supposed to have boulders on.
Oh, I knew that, I know. Saw it exactly, I know.
But that wasn't, there wasn't an easement there.
That was it, that was an old, old situation too.
But, people don't realize it's an easement, they go get a survey and they go, hey, my property comes to this.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, all you gotta do is see somebody throw a fence up someday, and nobody gets one to the back lot. Um, we got one down in South Groveland, it's, it's bound to happen a few years from now, I guarantee it. And it's... Yet, there was land for them to put a road further over, and they never did it.
Now, you'd have to, you gotta change the mile line, alright?
So, this, so it'll be less than the minimum frontage?
It's a hundred and fifty is all I need for a single one there.
Not necessarily, just don't have, just don't have to.
We can do, we've done this before, we can vote on it, and then if you change it, then we'll sign it, like, during the day, right?
Yeah.
I'd like the acting printed up, you think that's fine?
I think it should be printed without the easement, no?
Well...
If it has any grantee, then that doesn't happen, but, but it'd probably be cleaner if we did that, yeah.
I mean, if, if it takes, you know, we, we should set, set up another meeting within two weeks anyhow, as far as I'm concerned. Because we gotta keep, we gotta, we gotta have more meetings, we just have to.
No, but if we voted on it, then just...
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you live at the town clerk's office, we notice it's off, I mean, I'm retired now, so I can come down here as well, so... But, you know, I mean, it's, it's not something we should be doing this all the time, quite frankly. I mean, a lot of times, what I'd like to do is we discuss it first, then you draw, then you make changes to the plan, then you bring the plan in. That's a better way to do it.
That was originally what we had planned, but we were on the agenda for seventeenth of December, and then we had a snowstorm.
Then we got the snowstorm, it was supposed to, but you know, it's funny, that someone, we could sign it without the easement, right? I mean, a new mile line, and then this, this owner of this house could give an easement, five years.
Right.
Right?
Right, yeah, give an easement anytime, actually.
Anytime.
Without the planning board?
Without the planning board. Alright, so the way I'm...
Would you have to change the number D?
Way I'm reading this, Bob.
You, you can't do it without that.
No, I know. On fees, we, we've got a lot line adjustment, it's fifty dollars, and then we got an A and R, Fornet five, and five hundred per lot, so... It's one lot. One lot, and then the fifty dollars for the lot. Made up to the town of Groveland.
I can drop that off at the planner.
We'll need to see the new, new plan and everything, and...
It's all the same.
Yeah. I'll deposit the check with the, uh, Jackie. Alright, so Jamie O'Grady recommended we don't sign this until we see the new plan.
Yeah, I'd rather see the new plan, I mean, you know, just, uh...
We can do that.
Yep.
So, we drop it off here or at the town, at the clerk's?
At the town clerk.
I can get it to Kevin, Kevin can...
I'll drop it off with the, at the clerk's office with the check and all that, and the Fornet.
Uh, she, she won't know what to do, and why don't you call me?
Okay.
And we'll hook up, and then I can do it, I'll give you my cell phone.
Go ahead, what is it?
Nine, seven, eight, nine, nine, four, one, one, six, nine. Just don't call me too early in the morning, I'm retired. Another retired.
Probably, um, falling fast.
Yeah, um, we need a motion to vote on signing, that's all. Yeah, so... And we'll just make the motion to sign the, uh, plan. Mile line, plans with the, uh, proposed driveway easement taken out. You know, the new mile line will show that it won't have it on it, right?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Alright.
You want those three filed now, or you want to get these, you want to see?
Doesn't have to be shown on the physical.
Yeah, it does.
It does?
It does, because you're breaking a lot up, so you, you basically have to show lot A, lot B.
So, the hundred has to show?
It has to show. Yeah, it has to show.
When you want to be a file, three, three?
Six, six raised sort of, and we pass those out to, uh...
You basically...
When you, when you go to register deeds, I need six copies with the raised, you know?
Yeah.
So, you pull them over.
But they can't move it, you have to do it yourself.
I'll give you the copies.
Well, you gotta, you gotta abide by the side lot and the setbacks.
What you have to do is actually get...
That kinda forces you to a center of the lot, in a sense, somewhere more closer to the road.
Yeah.
But the reality is that some of these things...
Alright, thanks, quick in.
They have all the things known as the side yard, but they didn't have a backyard, they had a side yard. So, they were cocked the one side. Well, it's okay, if they're all on the street.
Did anyone else read the, uh, contract?
Well, you know, I mean, I've got six feet, I have a little neighbor, you know, if you got a good neighbor...
I was just reading all the, uh...
A bad neighbor.
Waivers and, the contiguous building circle, he made a quote on there.
Yeah, 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 so we didn't break out the, if, if the lot's over twenty percent slope, uh, we can't count towards the lot area. But we checked all that and we're okay, um, so...
And then the other big one was the well for sixty percent.
Right.
And the, uh...
I think that was tiny.
When the town water is fifty percent. And then the cul-de-sac was ninety-five instead of a hundred and ten. Now, do any of the driveways connect on the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Alright, that makes it a little hard when it's narrower because of, was there gonna be an island in that one or not?
Yeah, there was an island.
That's even gonna make it worse for circling and mailboxes and snow and everything else, especially when you lose fifteen feet.
So, so this was one of the things we talked about when we did our concept plan, and we actually went to the point where we talked to the fire chief. Um, we put, you know, the fire truck on it, ran it through the cul-de-sac, ran it in and out, and he was okay with it. Um, we have cars wanted somewhere along the line from the fire department.
Yeah, I remember you getting that, now, when he did it though, there was no snow and no buildup, and, uh...
Right.
Naturally, the truck's gonna fit pretty good there.
Right, right.
Myself, I'd rather not see an island in that one. It would give much more room.
Well, I guess, I guess ultimately, it's not a big deal, but, uh, and I think Carl's not here tonight, he'd be able to speak to it. Uh, but, I know, you know, he's trying, he's only getting two lots, we're trying to keep it, he'd like the landscape, it'd make it look nice, have a couple of trees in there, make it not look like a big sea of pavements, trying to avoid that.
Like Groveland Square.
Yeah, you know, it's just, it's just, he wants, he wants to maintain whatever vegetation's in the middle and...
Right, with ninety-five instead of a hundred and ten already, he's shot, and it wouldn't be that big.
Well, you're talking two, you're talking two houses up there.
You, you can do a cul-de-sac, you can do an island, you know, they, they don't wanna have to be an expansive twenty-five feet or anything, they can be ten feet.
Yeah, we can minimize the island, yeah.
We can minimize the, the whole thing, I mean, the...
Yeah, we can do that, kick the pavement in on the inside.
What, what we're after there is that the truck turns, it goes up the wrong street.
Yeah.
And, and it gets stopped.
We got that though, I mean, we absolutely have it, and that was something that we looked at initially with the concept, so...
I mean, nobody really understands that, but all you gotta do is lose a, a fire truck, I mean, while another house on the street next to it burns down.
Right, and he's got backed down a road, yeah, no, I get it.
I mean, I saw one in Georgetown, I can't believe they built hammerheads, and this is recent.
Yeah, they let us do that every, every now and then, we get the hammerheads.
Quite frankly, not when you're, you're backing out a big truck.
Yeah.
You know, that twists and turns and everything, and it's gonna go over somebody's lawn, it hits a big rock they put out there. So, it's, it's, you know, the, the, the circle is better, much better.
We, um, basically, we got this letter from Woody, uh, right around Christmas time. Um, I've gone through it, I, I've actually gone to the point where we wrote a response letter, it's a draft here, I'm not gonna submit it tonight. But we've gone through and, um, looked at each one of the comments that he has, we can address each one of them. Um, I think for the most part, it's providing detail, some more detail on the plan set. Um, I haven't been through the whole process with you guys before, so, so some towns would, um, would say, okay, address this with your set of plans for the definitive. Where other towns would say, let's do the whole thing now, and then submit your mile laws, uh, once you get a clean letter from Woody. So, that's really the reason I'm here tonight, is procedural, I don't know how you guys wanna do it, I don't wanna jump the gun and put the definitive together, or...
We wanna keep it minimal expense to use, so that means you should work it out before you do the mile laws at the end.
Okay.
Now, a couple other questions I had too, was the rounding on Seventh Star. Uh, you know, you plan on not having any rounding, you plan on coming straight out with your...
No, that was on the property line, that was on the property line because we don't have the room for the, for the radiuses.
Yeah.
We just don't have the, the physical room for it.
Right.
Uh, but the actual pavement itself, we do have flares, kind of pavement.
Right, then, uh, how many feet up were the catch bases gonna be, thirty feet up?
Give or take, yeah.
Alright, I would like to see double catch bases, two grates.
Okay.
And that way there, because you sharpened the stopping from, uh, what was it, fifty feet to twenty feet?
Yes.
Right, for the leveling, and if that ever iced up because of a heavy torrential ice storm or something, the dual covers would catch the water better.
Yeah.
And it's not that much more expensive to put the two grates on either side, that's what I would recommend.
Can I do this, can we run the numbers on it, to see what it's gonna look like, and I'll, I'll include a conservative estimate, that there's snow and ice and leaves and junk like that? But just to look at it, because I've only got, from the top of the cul-de-sac where it goes, like, basically into our pond, um, down to those catch, it's only, I think it's, it's like two hundred and fifty feet.
I just wanna make sure that no one slides out onto Seventh Star in the shortened area of leveling.
Okay.
Basically, that was all I had on, on the waivers. In our subdivision rules and regs, it does say that you're supposed to supply a sheet of why you're asking for waivers. To show that it's not a detriment to the town.
Right.
So, if you just have a blanket sheet, that will request that.
Yeah, I think I did.
Did it?
I think I did, but, but Woody picked out a handful of additional ones, so, um...
Well, you're better off going over with him first.
Okay.
Alright, and get everything resolved, you can get resolved, so that, I mean, if you keep going back and forth with him, I mean, that's where these numbers run up.
Yeah.
So, you're better off getting all these things straightened out, and where are you gonna need to seek waivers?
Okay.
You know, as to how much of a waiver, okay, and why? And you're gonna have to get that in writing, and of course, we'd like, you know, Woody's comments back, whether he's okay with a waiver or not okay with a waiver. Okay, that, that's what we're after.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, uh, he put in here that these are... Somewhere in here, he notes that, oh, uh, granted waivers to the road designer past projects similar to this application, yada, yada, yada.
I read that, uh, we glossed over there sixty percent for the well, though.
Okay.
Uh, we need to elaborate a little more on that.
The law will be serviced by onsite wells, and sixty percent of the minimum lot area must meet the CBA. So, we'll, we'll break that number out, I'll give you a table on the subdivision plant that shows that, and we'll break out the area on the lot that can't be included. And basically, because we don't have any wetlands, it's just the, um, the twenty percent slopes. So, we've done it, we did it in-house last week. Um, but to get from there to set of plans, it's just gonna take a little, couple weeks or something.
And the one-to-one sloping waiver from four to one, you were gonna submit it, or did you submit a plan or, uh, buttoness or whatever that's gonna?
Yeah, well, well, with the one-to-one, it's actually a one and a half to one, um, those are gonna have to be stone, uh, rock riprap. Um, and basically, it's twelve inch stone, about twelve inches thick, and, um, uh, that sits on top of a, a stabilization mat.
Okay.
But I do have the detail, that was, uh, that was included with the info that went to...
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I've seen that work, yeah.
Yeah, one and a half to one, but it's steep, so we don't wanna go, so...
Yeah?
Yeah, I don't wanna go much, unless we go to the wall.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I think, you know, once, once I had an opportunity to look through the whole thing, he had some comments here on drainage, uh, we just, we'll just clean it up. Um, we've done it already, so now it's just a matter of getting it back in front of him. But one thing I need to do is, uh, he asked specifically, what do we mean with the road commissioner? So, I put, I logged a call into, uh, him yesterday, it'll all follow up later this week.
Oh, okay, good.
That was the movie Bananas, remember, he called up the defense minister and the guy next one picks up the phone.
Yeah, seven stars maxed though, that's the problem.
Seven star, the drainage is, right. So, we won't be, what Woody suggested, it's a pretty good idea, is that instead of going right into the side of the existing structure, um, go up eight feet or so, drop a manhole there, and go into the side of that, and then connect everything into that manhole. Um, so, we'll do that. Huh?
But what would that would do for us?
Well, what he's saying is that it won't go into the catch basin and stir up some of the suspended's in there.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, it's maxed with water, I mean, volume.
Right.
Would, would building a bigger sump? That's what I was thinking. Yeah, bigger sump, and that would contain more water before it goes out the outflow.
Right.
To go into his basin that's maxed out.
And that's what we've done up top, so we've taken that, we've taken that area that we have for the pond, and considered the impact of the whole development on those catch basins. So, basically, I got one design point out at the bottom of the hill.
Where's the overflow for the pond?
It goes there, right, but we provide a, a significant enough volume that it releases slow enough, so that it doesn't surcharge the system.
Oh, the pond has a lot of volume.
Yeah, yeah, yep. That's the whole, whole idea behind that pond.
Because we've had trouble with that.
I'm sure, yeah.
One of the streets, that's the catch basin, the water comes out of the catch basins.
The, what, down lower?
Down lower.
Yeah, right, because you got, you got it all rushing down the road, so, um, can't do much about that other than not make it worse. And, and, and the reason why it's coming out is because those pipes down there are undersized.
Yeah, probably twelve inch.
Right, right, and it should be, uh, twenty-four or so. When, when you come down steep into a, into a more shallow pitch, you don't have the right pipe size, that's where you get your pop and grain.
We should.
Where's it go at the end anyhow?
It goes into a good sized cul-de-sac, Bob?
It goes into a good sized culvert, Bob put it in one eighty years ago.
Go from there, or generally yes.
Down through, and by the little uh.
The triangle, the restaurant.
Yeah.
It's a big culvert too.
Yeah.
Big box.
Alright.
No, it goes into a bigger.
But that, but that all goes into like the cul-de-sac size, you know, wanna try to reduce the pavement as much as we can, reduce. And we went through the whole thing where we have the, the more narrow road, the gravel shoulders. And, and attempt to try to like not have as much impact as a normal road going up and going in.
Right, cause we're mandated by Mass Blue Book that we can't inundate any surrounding property.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, I'm hanging too, my stamp, so, yeah.
Well, I think Bob's got a point though, maybe, well, you have to do four-foot sums, but maybe.
Maybe even a six one, with a ring around it, that'll deepen, deeper than silver, seventeen feet.
That might be problematic.
Bigger diameter, diameter than one, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, and then one thing we could do is we could do a um, we could do like a leachy type structure down there too.
Yeah.
If you wanted to see that, you know, so that we put in the four-foot structure with the sump, um, it'd be perforated. Right, and then we'll just wrap the bottom in stone on either side, that's gonna help during the smaller events, but when you, we get rain. You got rain.
All the digging we did was the shale type right in that area.
Yeah.
For percolation.
Right, right, yeah, we got, I think we're at like thirty minutes or so, give or take, we aren't.
Is there shale up there, right, and his hill?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, you're bound to get more water coming off of that hill, I guess.
Yeah, there always was, yeah.
I gotta talk to you about Elm Park.
But just keep in mind that, right now, right now, there's a fifteen foot wide driveway, give or take, maybe it's twelve. We're going in with a fifteen foot wide, so there's not a, it's like adding a, a walkway, you know, there's, there's not a big impact, and I. I think if, if you look at the drainage dogs, um.
That's right, and.
We're trying, we're trying our best to keep it as tight as possible. So that's what I'll do then, I'll go back with Woody, I'll go back and forth until I get a clean letter with him.
Yeah.
And then once I get a clean letter, we'll file the definitive, that's how you guys would like to see it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
You're better off just, just, you know, work all this stuff out, and then, then it's, you know, you're not going through plan after plan after plan, you know. Because that's where this thing mounts up.
We, I know.
Well, just keep talking to the guy.
So, so then the definitive process is, is uh, fairly straightforward then? I mean, we're gonna present with a clean letter, you guys will take another last look at it, make sure it's good, and hopefully we'll get the my laws.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, alright, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, thanks guys.
Okay.
We'll see ya. And girls.
Alright, uh, the other things we wanted, that were on the uh, meeting agenda was talking about the common drive. And then uh, talking about the, the zoning, and possibly talking about the master plan. And uh, talking about the uh, letter to the town to vote on to describe a uh. Medical marijuana area that we had already voted on to make it the uh, federal way industrial, but. We need to draw up something to go to the townspeople to vote, to go to the attorney general to adopt it, so. Got a lot of talking to do.
Which one do you wanna work on?
Yeah, why don't we start on a common drive launch?
Well, when I, when I looked at it, I started changing a lot of things, you know, still the same. One had some better things than the other, it's almost like you wanna kinda like piece them together, but, you know, my real question is. As we've had so many problems with these things over the years, is this a good thing? And um, you know, you can, I think we need to think this thing out more and more and more. Than we just rush in with, because, you know, to me, if we had a situation said none. Well, that's resolved, but if you're gonna do this, you, you gotta button this thing up such that it works. Because if it continues not to work, all we do is we put three people at odds. I mean, and we've been doing this, mostly two, but the real problem I'm having with it is. You know, I, I think it creates problems, and I know it creates problems in other towns, because we've heard about it. You know, over the years, and um, I know it's, it's, it cuts down cost. No question about that, but when three people can't get together and share a cost, I don't know what you do. And that's always been the problem.
Cuts down our costs, meaning.
Well, it doesn't cut down on our costs, it cuts down on their costs, and because basically, it's a private way at that point. The whole thing, the lead road in is a private road, they have to have front and join the legal road out front. But that, that's basically a private way, and then the three of those things that branch off, that's a driveway. But it's that private way that goes to them, it's a shared cost to each one of those three. And that's where you get into troubles, and you get into troubles with one of them, all of a sudden it's bringing, you know, a ten wheeler up there every night. You know what I mean, and just, it blazes out of you, so it's, 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 it's something you really gotta think of. I mean, in, in terms of um, what you really wanna do, you know, before you go on to this.
Why this came up was that different contractors and homeowners were questioning. Why it isn't in the subdivision rules, specifically saying that we do not allow common drives. And it's been our policy, I've been on since ninety-four, and we've only allowed it twice, and both times we've had problems, so. We, us, the board that's been on, said we wouldn't do it anymore, but it needs to be in the subdivision rules and.
Well, we, we had to for the time being, I mean, we, we just hold a hearing on the subdivision rules, and we just simply put a one liner in there, not allowed. And then we, then we debate it, that's all, you know, you, it's, you're better off thinking this thing through.
Yeah.
Alright, and it's been more than two, Bob, it's been more than two in this town, so, um, anyhow.
Now, why do they, why does, uh, so what's the advantage of it, on the other side, must be, you could do, take ten acres and put two lots.
I got ten acres, I got ten nice acres back here, here's the road, okay, here's my, here's my little sliver of land, and I can make it into my ten acres. That's, that's the advantage, the advantage is to the developer. What then happens is the disadvantages to the people that buy the house, the three people, cause you only do three. And I've seen this in other towns too, there's only three in China, but, I, no, the, the one in Boxford, I'm very well aware of. One guy's willing to pay for half of it, so the other two only have to pick up half, you know, a quarter, and it won't do it.
Or for like plowing and maintenance.
Everything, rebuilding it.
Well, what's, with a, a, a two lot subdivision, how do they work that, I wonder afterwards, they must have like a, own, owners. Like a condo, well, how do they do that with it?
This, this is, this is the problem, I mean, don't forget, what are developers that they develop, and they walk away.
But what I'm saying, what's the difference between, I was just trying to think, what's the difference between a two lot subdivision and a two lot common driveway?
Why aren't there problems with the subdivision versus the driveway?
Right.
They may access a small amount to get to their driveways, and, and that's all. And it's, it's fairly easy to fix between the two of them, some of these things go for quite a distance.
The biggest savings is they don't have to build it to town standards, the roadway.
Right.
And that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, quarter million dollars usually, you know, small.
Even the private way going up to the three driveways, you'll find they're sixteen feet, not twenty-four. So, it's already got some bad marks now.
So the only advantage for the town is though, that someone, it's uh, keeps it more open, you know, it keeps open space.
It keeps, it keeps open space, it keeps, you don't tear down rock walls, you don't go through swamps, you know, you don't have to build an expensive bridge, things like that.
I'm just thinking out loud a little, see what the advantage and the pros and cons.
That's why I'm saying, think this thing, because before you do it, because I can tell you right now, for everything. You think is in here, it ain't in here, that's all I can tell you.
Is there a way we could have a letter written, you know, legal document that says how they have to maintain it, how often they have to maintain it, and then.
It ain't in here.
Not the same, we could have that, saying this letter must be adapted.
You gotta find, you know, that's something that causes them to, to have to do that.
Almost like a codify type of.
And that would be tied into.
In their deed.
Deed, or tax, town taxes, or, I don't know, I don't know, but that would have to be.
It, it says in like, and just read this one piece, uh, covenants, planning board shall require a covenant restrictions. For the proper maintenance of common driveways by all affected property owners. All covenants and deed restrictions shall be recorded, then I put in what was in another one, it's. At the, it registered these Essex County South in reference on the plan prior to construction of the common driveway. But it still doesn't say in any, in either one of these, you know, that you're absolutely. You know, wanna fork up one-third.
One, one street just popped into my mind was Stevens. Remember all the commotion about, they didn't wanna plow, they didn't wanna sand, and then some people moved in, they did.
Yeah.
It was a uh.
Finally accepted.
Because we need to make sure emergency vehicles can get in there and stuff.
Yeah, that's why, I don't know with the common driveway, if you can do that.
Yeah.
That's, that's the advantage to having the two or three lot subdivision, you can regulate if the fire trucks can.
Yeah.
Get in, even though it's a private road.
Right.
Even, even the mail trucks wouldn't deal with a mail in there.
Yeah, so see, I'm thinking about that, that's.
Yeah.
Well, we should think about it, and then put something in the subdivision book with a.
I mean, the, the other thing that prompted me to say this, I mean, we, we keep adding houses, we just added two more tonight.
Supplements.
And, and the real problem, I, what I'm starting to hear is, is that when some people first go in, they put an in-law apartment in. Then all of a sudden, they think, oh, this is just an apartment now, and they rent it, and all of a sudden, the damn thing gets a different address. It adds to your forty B exposure, I mean, you know, here we built these two over fifty-five operations. And we need to get one unit out of that towards the forty B. And I keep saying to myself, oh my god, you know, we bend over backwards all the time for everybody, and we're not getting anywhere on that one.
Didn't we get twenty-five homes in um, White Stone?
No, we got nothing.
Uh, that's, how did that hundred, I thought we got twenty-five.
We got nothing. No, we got nothing out of that, but we, we begged them to do it.
Did they have to put the money in?
Yeah, they put the money in, that's all, that's all.
Oh, uh, right, the other subdivision, they put the uh, eighty thousand into the.
Cause it doesn't work out, they put the money in.
Yeah, the money's cheaper.
It's way cheaper, it's, but the, the, the next proposed project over at Estes would be a hundred percent.
Yeah.
If that goes, that.
We got thirteen with this one, we got thirteen on a common drive.
If that, by the way, you, when we come up, our part in that is um. What is it, the thing that always comes last, that's the board of appeals, God, I can't even think of it right now, but you couldn't sit on it. Your husband could come to the meeting, you couldn't be at the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
The Estes property?
Yes, because you're in a butter, two in a butter.
Okay.
Oh, on Estes.
Yeah, on Estes.
And that would be a hundred percent.
Understand that, so, you know, prep your husband.
That would be a hundred percent um, for the affordable house.
Yeah, if it's rent, if it's, they're all rented, you know.
Well, that's what the plan is.
Honestly, God, I don't know where that lies anymore, I was, I came up, uh, I, I bet you seven years ago. I don't know if it's still there.
What's?
Only twenty-five percent have to be at the lower rate. That, the, even when they came up with that seven years ago, but I don't know where that is now, I don't know whether they wiped that out. And you know, now it's, well, that's it, you get twenty-five percent period, but what they did then was, the whole thing would count. Even though the other seventy-five percent of the side market rate. Because what they needed in the Commonwealth at that point was more apartments. Now, with this last fee, this big fiasco we had back in oh, seven, oh eight, uh, where all the mortgages got into serious trouble. Um, it, it kinda pointed out to a lot of people that homeownership is not for everybody. And that's another thing that says we need apartments.
That's right.
And um, I mean, it's, it, it's a problem, you know, getting this done. Because the worst thing is if you even go on twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent, you're gonna be at five thousand houses before you meet it. You know, that's, that's that calculation, it just kills you. I mean, I know one company that could pull in here in a second, boom, they'll build it, nobody will like it, but they'll build it. And they'll all be even for rent.
I would like one, one ton.
But, you know, I mean, that's another thing, I mean, you know, we, I don't know where that group is that was meeting on affordable housing.
They're still, yeah, they still have a committee, I.
Do they have a plan?
I'm not sure, they, they try to, I don't know, I've talked to one member, I think they're working on something.
Well, I think, I think it's something that, you know, this board ought to be kept up to date on, you know, realistically. And um, because, we're talking about forty B, the impact that we keep, you know, building ourselves.
Yeah.
And nothing happens, nothing blocks in the door to help us.
Bring down the ten percent.
Bring down the ten percent, you know.
Let the record show Walter Sorensen is here now.
My apologies for being late, we have kids' basketball and all over the place tonight, so different cities.
Yeah.
Well, we were talking about, we'll see what Walter has to, uh, common driveways versus the way we have it now. Two lot, three lot subdivisions.
Yeah.
I mean, my, I, I came up with, I, I looked at this, my, my honest opinion is it's almost.
I emailed you those.
Better off, we go into the subdivision rules and regs, you know, hold a hearing and say, not allowed.
Yeah.
And then think about it, because, you know, even putting stuff together from one to the other. It is drawing questions in my mind, and you know, the real problem isn't in my mind is, I don't know what we, you know. What we have to do to make that way to the three driveways. So that they all own a share of that, and when it comes time to fix it, they do fix it.
Three or, or two?
Well, this, this thing goes up to three.
Yeah, we, we were doing, you know, three was, was, was the King Street nightmare.
Oh, there's all sorts of nightmares.
And the other one, uh.
You got two up here is a nightmare.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, yeah, yeah, besides that one, yeah.
Wait till that one off of Wood Street slides out, that's gonna be a real good one.
Yeah, um, and that's kinda why we, we did away with it, I mean, the subdivision control, I changed to eliminate it right now, is that's an easy fix. To stopgap it, to, to, we have some time to study it.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have many, but the ones we have, they all have problems.
Yeah.
Every single one.
Is, does it make sense to just put the stopgap in, says none?
Yeah, none, not allowed.
And, and, and go from there, it's, it's, cause see, one of the other things I'm finding out is, is that, you know, people will go and they'll get up. An in-law apartment, and then um, they sell the house and everything, somebody else comes in suddenly, ooh, an apartment.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, it becomes thirty-one rear.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now we got two units.
Right.
Instead of the one unit with an in-law, I mean, we, we did that in-law bylaw.
Right.
When I was on a board of appeals years ago, because people were always asking, 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 and.
Well, it's a fix to that too, the easy fix to that, we discussed it, I don't think we ever implemented it, or, or maybe we did. But nothing ever came up on sale yet, but with Debbie, when the, when the property came up for sale that had an in-law in it. Either got wiped out, okay, but she would know.
Yeah.
Or it gets registered as a legitimate apartment, which counts towards a ten percent. And that's the, the two ways that we came up with.
But they have to agree to that.
Well, at this time of the sale.
Agreed to it.
Well, at the time of the sale, it's a sign off, which did you do?
Yeah.
So we, we eliminate that on the sale coming through, when, when they go in there to get the assessor's stuff on a sale, they go, okay, here's your form. This is part of it on your closing stuff, okay, and you have to pick one of these two, either you do away with it, or you count it in, and it's permanent. So we can count it, and that's how you catch them, and the new people coming in, I don't care.
Right, one, one example is one on King Street about six years ago. The realtor was advertising a. The realtor was advertising a barn that was turned into a living quarters. As a uh, extra uh, bedroom and and place to rent.
If you find the guy that did that.
Right, and also. Also what it led to, let me finish. What it led to was on the weekend at night, they tied into the septic system. Which is you can't do, you can't modify a system without coming to the Board of Health. And they did that on McCoy and everything else, which overextended the septic system. And then they were trying to sell the house with an added rental piece of property and. We worked that out, but then it opens and leads to other things that happen when they do things like that.
I need to tell you what happened to the poor people that. That did own that, because the guy took his wife's name off the deed when he remortgaged it and walked with the money.
Whoops.
Okay, the second thing that happened was the initial money that went into that came from her parents. Six figures gone. So that thing is a real serious problem out there. And and literally that was an in-law apartment, which was kinda like a barn thing. It was supposed to be enclosed to the house, it never got cool totally enclosed, it was like a breezeway. And and the reality is, it should be nothing more than an in-law. Not an apartment, but that's what's happening. That increases your forty B. We we can't push that one under the rug, we can't do it, we need to understand that. Where are we going, what are we doing? And what, what is this other group that's working on what to do about forty B?
On what, the Affordable Housing Group?
Affordable Housing.
Who's on that committee now?
Uh, I only know, well, Bob got Bill.
Yeah, Paul Bob's still on?
Bruce, um.
Bruce Adams?
He always was.
Yeah. So it's still the old, the old, the old, some of the old guards still there on that committee, cause we were running at one point.
All right, let's move on to another sub, this here will uh, put none and then uh, talk about it later on.
Okay, so you wanna motion a flight or jury flight?
No, we have a motion, we need one, yeah.
Okay, how about a motion to um, modify the subdivision control law to eliminate common driveways at this point? And each lot must have its own access.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, aye, show the vote now, let's. And that's just a meeting, we just advertise it and go, so we can set that up in the next few months anytime. Just get that done.
All right, the uh, other uh, thing on the agenda was talking about the zoning. Bylaws, uh, I've been told that there's some new members on the zoning bylaw. Uh, board and uh, they wanna work with us and.
Zoning board or the zoning bylaw board?
No, zoning board.
Zoning board. And uh, we've been uh, trying to locate the disc. Of the zoning bylaws and we found out that Lisa Mead. Who uh, was representing the zoning board came before us and she has a disc, but she hasn't returned calls to get it back to us. But with them wanting to work with us and to get these zoning uh, bylaws. Brought to the town, we have the vote on, we wanna set up uh, joint meetings.
Yep.
And uh, start the ball going on that.
I think what we should do first is is locate the disc, or Lisa's got it. Uh, get the disc out, have her produce copies as is to everybody. Um, it's gonna be a budget, what do we have in the budgets, anybody know?
The uh, budget was thirty, December thirty for us and he put in the three thousand and fifteen hundred total forty-five. With a warning that uh.
What about carryover from last year, we didn't burn anything last year?
They used all the money.
Did they? Oh, they they rescheduled it somewhere else?
I believe so.
Okay, cause I know we didn't use it, we haven't had big ticket items in a long time. So if we get, um, how many members on the zoning board?
I don't know right now, but.
Uh, you you've got five sitting and I think they had three.
Two alternates or three?
Three alternates, so.
Okay, so so that's eight plus us, so if we got twenty-five new copies. To the last, I mean, we could bring everybody up to speed, does that sound like a reasonable number?
Twenty-five copies of the disc?
Well, I mean. Twenty-five copies of the of the of the regs, cause every every used copy we had disappeared.
Yeah, you wanna copy, you wanna copy of it, you wanna a paper copy.
Right, paper, cause they're gonna write on it, check it.
Everybody gets one.
Right.
Then when we come into the meeting, we sit down, we we go through where we left off. Also, some of the things that we have noticed that are still in there that we probably ought to take out. Remember that thing on section one hundred? That they wanted to do something uh, on Center Street, way out by the West Newbury Line. On septic systems out there, that was gonna be.
A common system. Yeah. That's still in there?
Yeah, and there's a thing in the in section one hundred says, we can allow that if we want and we don't. But the reality is. We gotta clarify that to get.
That was, that was in a, in accordance with a special permit too, so.
We need to read that, we need to read that, you know, because I mean, that could get you into a mess. You're never gonna get sewer job.
The Board of Health doesn't allow common septic systems.
Yeah, but you you know what, that was a, that was a P U D special permit, so with the with the list station.
Coming in here first before it gets over to there, Bob.
What's um. I'm wondering if twenty-five copies will, cause we get the selectmen, we gotta spool up too.
Well, one thing I brought up beforehand is they have a budget, which they get every year.
Who's they?
His own board, yeah.
Yeah.
And uh, what is it, five thousand, ten thousand, something like that, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, but you know what? Yeah, you you know what, it's unfortunately, it's, the planning board's in charge of the zoning bylaws, so we we gotta take it on. And then we've got, we got line items for those things, twenty-five copies today, if we've already got the disc, shouldn't be much.
Actually, you get one, I mean, just go.
Go staples and throw it out, and we have a, we have an account through Staples, through the town, so so we can do that, or Lisa can do that, but we need the disc, obviously. Okay, and we can have.
One thing, well, I wanna make sure that we go in front of the zoning board. And not uh, specifically say we're in charge and you're gonna do this and that, we we wanna work jointly.
We do, we have to.
Right. But I I want that to get across, that it's joint and we wanna work together. Under our, under our jurisdiction to write it, but.
We're gonna need more. We're gonna need one, one copy per board.
We're gonna be editing.
Yeah, but there's usually one, when we did this before, if we're bringing, we're the, we're the longest board, I think, besides maybe your your board. Okay, um, for constitutional memory, cause people come and go.
No, zoning board, zoning board's been around since fifty-four.
No, no, I mean, I mean individuals.
Oh.
Yeah, so so whoever was on this on the last round is probably gone. Very few of us are still here.
Three of us that were here at that point.
So we're here and you're here, you're new, okay?
He's new.
But he saw it to the other stuff, um, to the other board, so of all the other boards in town. You can probably bet that uh, they haven't seen this document before, this is gonna be new to them, cause we last touched this, what, three years ago? Yeah, so it's been a while, so we may need one copy for other boards that aren't gonna be in the. In the nuts and bolts aspect of it, just to say, hey, this is common and uh, cause remember when we sent it out for every board input? Yeah, cause some of the boards were affected.
Just meet with them and then have them and us work together on what we're going to do. To get all the boards together and then, let's let's work with them and set up the agenda and mesh together first and then set the guidelines.
I'm just trying to just get copies so everybody knows what we're talking about.
Right.
And then and then we gotta set that up.
Realistically, what you gotta do, I mean, we write the bylaw. The the board, zoning board uses it way more than we do.
So they have to understand it.
They, so yes, and there's there's certain things in there, they're gonna want.
Right.
Okay, I mean, and and that's, I got no problem with that, we need to work with them on that part of it. But beyond that, it's like you need to get those two boards together, working on that to begin with. Okay, that's phase one. Phase two is you go out to the rest of the town and tell them why you did what you did, okay?
Right, right, but I'm just.
Phase three is town meeting.
Right, I agree.
Okay, so I mean, it's it's um. And I I don't think we were doing anything regular whatsoever at all, I think that it's. Because the zoning board applies that zoning bylaw to what comes in before them. They see needs in the bylaw and. If if there's additional pieces that they wanna put in there, that's fine with me, okay? But I think realistically, we really wanna get the thing going and that's it.
Right.
Okay, so.
Now, what do we get for a budget for that? Cause we don't have any dough for that.
I mean, copying what's already there is one thing, okay?
We we have the money for that and that's gonna be our start.
Once you start talking about it and then writing down, okay, you may not agree all a hundred percent to begin with. So nothing happens right away.
We're year out.
Once you start getting things nailed down and that's gonna be written into it.
Yeah.
Then that's when you go back and you say, okay, type this into the disc and produce another one.
All right, so so I'm just thinking of timelines, budgets. And 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 workload, because it's seven eighths complete, but we still gotta review it and we gotta tune it. And there's a couple of sections, like the buy rights section, we gotta put back in, and a few other things, so timeline, this April, that ain't gonna happen.
No.
Okay, so, but what can happen is by April, um, we can have the copies out. We can have the boards set up to at least receive them and get first meeting or two with Z B A and welcome everybody aboard and get on the same page. And then figure out a budget that we're gonna need and get that on the warrant. So when does the warrant close?
February third.
All right, so we're gonna need probably Lisa to get us a number. So we can pitch it in a warrant article to do the last tuning up of the zoning bylaws and get them out. And and then that'll, that'll give us a budget.
Budget, go to the finance committee.
What's that?
Or add it to the budget, we don't have to go separate articles, just add it to a, instead of three.
Do we have a budget, yeah, see, we don't even know what it's gonna cost, it's probably gonna be twenty grand.
Jesus, don't say that.
Well, the last, we spent a fortune on it.
Budget deadline was December third for us and it's gone by, so.
So, what, so, all right, so the finance committee's already had their meeting?
No, they haven't.
That's that's what Greg put put in.
I know, but they.
Is he back?
No, he's just part-time, you know, helping at night.
Who's in Greg's position?
Well, they'll, they're, I think they.
They're still working there? Okay.
Um, they have an interview, I guess, yeah.
So, you you know what we need to do is contact, does anybody have Lisa's contacts? Do you have them up?
Uh, no, Woody had it.
All right, so call Woody in um.
I think I have her card somewhere.
Well, here's the worst thing, you're dealing with a lawyer, you're dealing with a four hundred dollar fee.
Right.
So the point is, that I'm trying to say is. The first thing we want is a copy, her to print out a copy of it.
Yeah.
Give us the copy, we'll make copies, okay?
Oh, yeah, I don't have a problem with that, we get the savings to do that.
That's job one, okay, job two is getting everybody together, sitting down, after we've got these copies, sit down and see where we go from there.
Right.
We don't go back to her until we've basically got everything to go into it.
But we need a budget because, to go, cause we could be ready to do stuff by June and we don't have any money. So we gotta get something in a budget going to have the money to work with.
But my feeling is, all she then has to do is to get that typed into that. Or give us a damn disc and we'll do it.
Well, there's.
Like some work.
There's the legal sniff test. That we do get from her, so.
All I know is Woody, Woody said he called her and emailed her. He hasn't got a response, he even talked to a project at the office.
Who who tried?
Woody.
Oh, did he? Really?
Yes, I've been asking for it for how many months? Six.
Really?
I think I have a copy of it.
Yeah, a hard copy or the the disc copy?
No, the hard copy.
Okay.
I just gave him a master copy.
When I cleaned out my desk, I brought home about six boxes of crap. So I think it's in there because I remember a binder.
Oh, yeah.
I think.
See, but what's the date on this one though, what's the last, we do one last.
I gave Andrea my binder that I had.
I I don't think March eighth nineteen fifty-four is the current one, Bob.
No, not.
Um, that's what it says here, um, but anyway. Just, just checking, uh.
I get a more reasonable.
It's the date here, um.
If you could go back to that.
It probably was.
Knowing what's happened.
All right. This has got a uh. It's it's got a change, a a change on on um, in twenty-ten, but that's still four years.
I have the yellow draft in my office.
Yeah, see, we're, we were all set to go with with a bunch of sections, so.
Not that type of buyer, just a.
Um, the fifty-four version.
That isn't the one?
All right, so well, this is an easy fix.
Let me, let me look through these boxes. I'm not doing very well, I took them home and that's about it.
Okay, so how about we just get some um. Uh, let's get some, some schedule stuff going here, so, so we motion to um. Reach out to Lisa, so so I can, I have some time, I can do that and at least get a copy of that disc, okay? And then. We need to get ahold of Greg. And have him throw a a line item in there for some, ten grand or something. And then we can tune it later, when's our next uh, we can go fiscal in July, right? So if we get ten thousand. And that's a big round number, who knows if that, if it would even cost that much. In effect. And then on July one. Okay, we can for the fall town meeting, for that budget. Have if if we need more, to finish it up, we come up with that number, but at least it'll give us something to start with.
One thought is, we had two of the selectmen, Betty and Joe. On the Groveland Advisory Meeting when I brought this up about the master plan and the zoning bylaws. And the whole, their whole board, there was seven of them, agreed that we should work on it, so. In order to get a budget set up where money is so tight for this fiscal year, we just got two memorandums saying that. If we didn't use all our budget last year.
What year's that?
Not to put in for that much money.
January, well, no.
So maybe if we got the selectmen on board to ask for a warrant for more money to be budgeted to. Indeed, get the zoning bylaws done, maybe it would help.
Well, that was the question, do we go with a line item or do we go with a warrant article?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is it.
Okay.
Because this is that the uses.
Okay, good, okay, now is that the whole thing or is that just the use section?
Well, it's, no, it's everything, but it it's, this this I know, this is this is the real thing because this is. This is where we got hung up, we never got through this thing, I mean. And um.
You set that out with you wanted um.
Input from other boards, yeah. Okay.
You wanna bag it or?
Someone's gotta hold on to it.
I know, this is the problem, don't lose it.
Yeah, you think you want it.
Don't lose the copy.
Or go to Staples and make one.
So you think it's a good idea to get the selectmen on board to try to pass a warrant article for a budget?
Yeah.
But if it fails on a budget, on on a warrant article, we're host, um, then we're dead in the water for another year, so.
I think we should put it in a budget, go to the finance committee and say we need to do this.
And then in the fall, we could do a warrant article saying, hey, we got this far and we just need a little more to finish. Cause at least we'd have some progress, everybody on board.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, how about a blessing from the selectmen to the budget committee saying.
Absolutely.
That they would uh, like to see it done.
Oh, yeah, we need them on board, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I I think it's gonna, I don't, I don't even say it's gonna floor that we're asking for more money on this thing. I I have the feeling they think this thing may be just about there, and it wasn't, it never was. So, you know, it it's like you're saying, it was seven eighths. And you know, it's that one eighth that still has to get done.
It's a living document too, like the master.
You've got the Board of Appeals, I guarantee you, they're gonna wanna make some changes.
Oh, yeah.
I yeah, I know they are because.
Well, and that's if the current C B A is up to speed. And if they get new members on, I hope they're up, you know, they may not be up to speed with with all the regs yet, it takes a while to. Get spooled up unless they've been there a while, just like any new, any new member on any board has gotta go through a, a learning curve.
All I know is we spent over thirty-eight thousand dollars on a zoning bylaws. We spent over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on the. We spent over a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars on the master plan and neither one of them are in effect, so we need to do something.
Well, sections of them are are in effect and completed, um, as they were done.
It's it's the understanding of this bond, that this these things change, change, change. They all stay the same.
That's why they're living documents, yeah.
The real problem is getting that over to everybody in the town, that things have to change is is job one more than anything else. And.
Yeah.
We may get to the end of this thing a year from now, okay, ready for town meeting and all. It goes through and all that, but I'll bet you anything, we've got a couple of changes.
Oh, yeah.
Works right then and there.
I mean, you put the subject.
Or the board, the zoning board does. And, you know, it it's it's inevitable.
Mm-hmm.
It's inevitable, it's it's it's, you know, it's what's happening to you, because what's happening is. It's us versus them all the time, okay, developers are gonna find another way around everything and all that. And with the con, we're willing to get a little bit more lenient on things.
Mm.
Well, there you go, you know?
Well, it's.
You're gonna, you know, start, you know, building higher fences, that's all.
It's cheaper to. Update living documents than to do what we're doing, which is put one in place, like the last master plan was sixty three. So here we are fifty years now. So so and we've got, you you know, and all we have to do is update the sections, get that through and then and then just have everybody update and it's and that's a freebie once it's on board. And just updating the sections and it's just print copies, um.
Actually, something got done in nineteen seventy six. But it wasn't known as a master plan and I can't remember what hour it was, but we had people from all over the town came in on that one and, uh.
Yeah, sixty, I think it was sixty three.
Yeah, we need to, we need to work together and not be like the Congress with the Democrats and Republicans. Need to work together, the boards.
Nope, that's facility plans, complex nineteen seventy seven. There's that community action statement.
So there's only, that's the only one around, you think?
Scary. I I have a binder and I thought, didn't we have binders?
Yeah, yeah.
We had binders.
But the other ones got sent out to every zoning, uh, every board member and we got them and.
That's that went to selectmen's office.
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry, I misspoke, but the last master plan, okay, was not sixty three. It was sixty four. It was, uh, February of nineteen sixty four was the last master plan in the town of Groveland, so exactly fifty years coming up, we should have a party. Um, that's okay, so anyway, and I remember this because this was in the safe, Dick Abbott found this. And when we called on it to re- reactivate the master plan, I had contacted the state and, um. See, who was Doug Schmidt was helping us out with that and they sent us a copy. And, uh, it was kinda humorous at the time, but not necessarily to town government, but they said, you know, we thought this was. It was it was very detailed for the time nineteen sixty four and when they sent it back to us, they said, uh, this is a perfect example. Uh, when you do your new master plan, uh, don't let this happen to you. Because what happened was it was done, it was comprehensive and it it went right in that bookcase right there. And it's been there for fifty years and nobody took it out and updated it.
Andrew, are there any more tapes?
This one right here.
Yeah, she's right here.
So anyway, so that's why these things have to become a living documents, but I stand corrected for the record here, I was off a year.
There was some in seventy six, I know there was.
Yeah, the comprehensive plan in nineteen. On March seventh of nineteen seventy seven was the town complex.
Did we turn the tape already?
Yeah.
This is a, uh, the first meeting we've actually talked for a long time.
Yeah.
So so there you go, there's your, there's your other one. Uh, there it is, nineteen seventy seven, so. Okay.
Yeah. All this thing, you have a name for this thing.
Alright, so who's gonna, uh, call and try to schedule a, uh, board meetings between the, uh, zoning and us?
See, you can do that and selectmen on board.
Yeah, this wasn't it.
And I'll, um. How do Lisa and get all the other stuff coming?
That wasn't it, that wasn't it.
This one, no.
Let me take this, I'll look through my boxes if I got the same thing, you know? What I'll do is, uh, you know, I'll just, I'll just, I'll find a place, I'll make some copies, that's all.
Well, we can cop, we can send it up to Staples, I imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a Staples account through the town, so.
The town has.
I'll get the disk, but the number of copies is is where my my question is at the moment, do we do twenty five or do we do more? It's easier in the disk, you just bring it in and they go zip and then they can put it in that little.
Yeah.
You know, ring by.
Can't they be, or is it, they make a disk out of that?
Well, you can, you 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 can, you can actually scan it in.
Do you mean a copier?
But you know what, if she made revisions on this copy.
Grow a server.
Yeah.
And then, you know, I don't know, did they ever teach them how to how to use that copier as a scanner?
We could, oh, yeah, we scan.
Come right up on your computer.
Yeah, it does online, cause I scan a lot.
Yeah.
So then you get a disk from there, put it in a file.
Yeah, the problem is you can't go and just type into this. There is a way, but you gotta buy another Microsoft program in order to do that.
Well, my question is, did we make changes on this draft that she recorded that we don't have? So this could be, there could be another draft.
I know.
Be on that date.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, so that's why I need to get the disk and then I'll bring the disk to Staples, cause that'll be the latest one.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll make, but how many copies should we do, twenty five?
Start with twenty five.
Yeah, start with twenty five.
Twenty five, okay.
You're gonna, you gonna do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll chase the disk, yeah.
You could take that and read and put, mask that one up even.
Yeah.
If you wanna, I don't care.
Yeah, it's, I I gotta be honest with you, this is so long ago now, I mean, I probably forgot what the hell we were, where we were and.
Well, that was still one, although that was five years ago.
Yeah. But where we got hung up, we got hung up and did, I think we got through the business, but not completely, we got hung up in the industrial. That's where we got hung up.
Looks like that's complete there though, it seems like it is.
Well, it's it's.
It was right, that does have.
What we had, we didn't agree to it.
But I don't know where we got this.
Some stuff herself.
Right. That's what we're gonna bring her back up.
Figuring her out, okay, she give away the store. So, I mean, and I know damn well.
Oh, yeah, and this is the one with the revision, so the revision page, that was another change that we did was to put the revision bars in, that was a request.
You can do is you can say buy right. You know, businesses through a special permit and then not allowed, you can do that. And we have.
Let's move on to the next subject.
What else we got?
That's where we go wrong.
Alright, so, uh, are we all setting our duties here?
No.
No.
We're gonna move on to the next subject, which is getting a letter drafted about the medical marijuana spot. That we voted on to make it federal way, the industrial. We need to draw up a, uh, letter to present to the article, to present to the town. In order to be passed and then submitted to the Attorney General, that needs to be done. Because Georgetown's being pressured, Hable's being pressured, a couple of other towns I just read. And the Selectment Secretary said that we need to act on that.
Okay, so a letter to look, just inform them of the of the location that we decided?
No, and draw up an article stating we need to find out what other towns have presented it. In the form to the townspeople so that they can vote on it, so that we can advertise it in advance.
Changing the zone.
Right.
Oh, changing the zone, it's a zoning change, okay, so we need, we need the, uh, overlay, when's this gonna, it can't, it can't happen by.
That's where you're gonna have to split zones. Because if you're.
Zone it, it's an overlay.
If you're saying, okay, I wanna just put it on federal way, some location on federal way.
Yeah.
Then what you gotta do is you gotta go I one, I two, I three, I four, I five.
Or an overlay.
Oh, man.
How about an overlay?
Um, well.
But the zone within a zone, on an overlay for that specific use.
One, one question, ladies and gentlemen, there's only one lot, I think, left on federal way.
Yeah, but in existing buildings.
Yeah, but you know, here here's one, here's one, let me, let me come from the standpoint, okay, I own a business block down the street. Why can't I have it? Why are you getting it the federal way?
Yeah, it almost Jim's, I think you have to put it like in in, you have to categorize it industrial zone.
Oh.
And then you're gonna split that one to I.
Yeah, yeah.
Two.
I've had this in the back of my head for years, okay, which would go where and whatever.
What else could you do, how else could you do that?
Well, you could do an overlay, so within I one on federal way could be the I two medical district. Cause it could be in any one of those buildings.
You have I.
And at the, at the same time. Jim, at the same time, we put this on the back burner on the zoning was the adult area. For bookstores and things like that.
Yeah, it was right next door to the other place.
That's what I was just gonna say, uh.
One's gonna walk right in.
We need to delineate.
Yeah.
These spots for that too.
Well, I'll tell you, that guy that runs that that, um, Port K's interiors used to be. I mean, he's lost just about every tenant along there and it's the reason why he wants fifteen bucks at square foot.
Who owns the building?
Uh, it's one of our old friends, um, down in Topsfield, I forget his name, Davina.
Myron did. Myron owns it?
Yeah, Myron owns that now.
Really?
Yeah, well, he forced everybody else into bankruptcy, that's why.
How about, what's constitute spot zoning?
Spot zoning is 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 a situation where you you make I one and it's basically one building, one or two buildings.
So that's what we'd get into.
Right, that's why you wanna overlay, so you so you overlay the I two district only in on the federal way.
We we have spots only in this town, when we went to sell the old town hall. The woman that wanted that wanted to run some business out of the first floor, she'd buy it from the town at that point. So they made me, I I lost half of my vacation running the damn wheel and trying to measure that whole area. Well, I ended up putting dark into it as well, but that is spot zoning.
That limited business.
Limited business. That's why it's 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 not good to do.
Did they bring in the new form?
So we'd have to get a zoning change. That would be, I think that's a zoning change though, marijuana.
Yeah, they didn't bring in the release.
I mean, what you. You don't wanna put this thing in the woods, okay? God knows what'll go on, you know, so I mean, literally, if you took. Where are you coming into the town on nineteen seventy seven Georgetown? You allow it to go along that corridor up to the Chinese restaurant where it drops. So one side is I one, the other side is I two, then you take. Well, I think it like about a hundred, hundred and fifty feet back of I two, all the way to Tikshakas. Okay, is I three, across the street becomes I four Chesterton.
Oh, boy, now we got a zoning map.
Then then across.
Yeah, we're we're just some mixed up.
Across the street, cross center street is I five. Because that's still industrial out there, we, you don't bought that.
But Jim, why don't we just do a in I two overlay exactly on the federal way footprint? Which would include those two areas specifically, so I, within the I two zone, which could be any one of those existing buildings out there. Okay, so it's anywhere in that footprint on that federal way, you can have these two categories in class.
Well.
It's a lot easier than, and and so it's a lot less map change than going through and it allows both those uses only within that footprint.
Let me ask you a question, do any of the businesses up there have any say in this at all, we're gonna put these?
Well, I don't know, they're all owned by the same guy, we should probably ask them.
No, not none of us, well.
He doesn't care, you know, it's gonna be the most popular building.
But the.
The candy store next door to the.
That's it too, with the donut shop?
The donut shop next door to the marijuana.
Kathy ninety seven's gonna be there.
It's more involved, you know, the other way is.
MJ ninety seven.
We don't have to do anything, the other way is we don't have to do anything, but then they have to go to Board of Appeals, right?
Yeah.
For a permit to put some.
Special permit.
Special.
This is, this isn't happening in this town meeting either.
Here's here's the other thing, I mean, how many of these do you want? You know, you want one?
Yeah.
Want exclusively one?
Well, that's that's the footprint I'm gonna have.
Yeah, I mean, what is, what is the state saying on this, I mean, I'm surprised the state didn't get into the business.
Yeah, they could tax it, take a fortune. Just think what you could do, you could sell lottery tickets in there, okay, lottery could get a kick out of that, so all the schools get something like that. Okay, and then you have the old, you know, everybody down the line, they'll have rental spaces for everything from, you know, Doritos to donuts and coffees.
Stories I can tell when they, whenever they.
And a battery store.
The transportation building in Boston.
Yeah.
It has the first floor and it has businesses in it on the first floor, you could not believe what they were doing. In the legislature when that building was built in order to get tenants into there. Because it was a favoritism like you couldn't believe and they literally had bids on that space. And where do you think that money went?
Well, where do you wanna be, you want other people, uh, dictating what the town has to do or do you wanna? Be pro and and you have something set up?
This is the biggest industrial area in the town, so.
Right, and it's the most active.
It's better to have it by businesses than in the middle of town.
I think they should set something up and not leave it to the whim of other people.
Well, I I think we we already talked about it, we we made a vote on it before because we had to, so that's already in process, what was that, a year ago?
But you just can't put it, I know we voted on it to put it in federal way, but that's, we're getting into spot zoning there, no?
No, that's.
It's not so much a spot as it is a large zone, uh, it's it's part of the industrial zone, but I. It would a question come up by other businesses, why not my area, why that area?
Yeah, but that area could become their area, they just go in there.
What if, what if?
No, no, I'm talking about other other building owners.
Yeah, owners.
I mean, what you, what you've done basically is you've favored one building owner versus other building owners.
Didn't we do an overlay on the, uh, wireless, the towers, didn't we do an overlay on those or no?
No, they're all, they're in the industrial zone, the only difference is down here.
Yeah.
What about enlarging, enlarging the overlay, do you include all that vacant industrial land that used to be the rock quarries and stuff?
Yeah, the seventy acres with the.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna.
Uh, not just that one, but the lands for sale behind the pet place up here, across from the, uh, tea garden and stuff.
No, you wanna put this thing right on the main road, you want, you want police surveillance and stuff like that, you don't wanna bury it in the back.
So if we do, if we do what you said, I one, A two, I three, we we gotta, we've gotta talk to like Woody.
Everybody.
New maps.
Oh, yeah.
No, this is.
Now here comes our budget, you know?
That's big money, changing these maps.
Money changing.
And and then you have to get a a town vote to change the map.
Yeah, that's right.
So that's a whole process.
What the hell are you doing?
So that's why the overlay. You you know, into one area, and I wonder if we can do that as a description.
Don't, don't forget, I mean, here's, well, what you can do is. If you had a a zone that wasn't that big and it was out of the way, like the industrial area is. Way down by the other end of the town, but don't forget, it's all one big zone, okay? It goes down Salem Street, it crosses.
Right, right.
Goes across the center street.
You gotta do, you gotta do the overlay.
Say, when you say industrial zone, bingo, it's anywhere on that, that's the problem.
So we we have to create the 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 MJ zone.
MJ zone.
Um, overlay, okay, and identify that zone in a specific area. And then that that gives us that one area, otherwise you are, you're you're gonna blanket the the whole.
Well, do we need permission to get some, uh, legal advice from Copeland?
I I would ask that question, uh, of them because for the simple reason that I see this thing. Creating a worse situation, so I I think we have to ask them first, okay, here's, here's a couple of thoughts. You tell us.
They must be doing it in other towns, so so we could probably plagiarize their warrant article.
That was my whole intent of bringing it up, and that's why we were talking about the common drives plagiarizing a couple of other towns.
Yeah, everybody's plagiarized our stuff for years.
You can change it to your own and add, take out everything, you do anything you want.
But the main point is we need to do something.
Okay, so, so we need a, a Copeland page, i- and it doesn't have to happen tomorrow, so. Uh, cause they're gonna be working on that stuff, but we could use some, some warrant arti- article language to establish the area. And some input as to how they did it. In a town our size, because in cities, they probably have more than one dispensary. So, but in a town our size, we only need one, and how do we, how do we make sure that it goes into a specific area? So, I, I think that would be it, you wanna spearhead that one with the uh? Okay, so we get that going.
Is this for growth only or for dispensing?
Dispensing, as far as I know, I mean, are they allowed to grow there?
Yes, yes, that's another permit too.
Okay, so that's another area, so, so you know, as you drive by ninety seven, there's that perfect lot for, you know, farmland area. It's wide open, right? They'll put out the umbrella cart with the hot dogs.
Georgetown is growth only and it's inside.
The ice cream ahead sign.
There we go. You go down, come around, there'll be a big long line, hey, what's the line for? Well, let's see, that line's for donuts.
I just hope everybody at home is enjoying this tonight.
They might have sent something out, I'll have to read it, Copeland Page might have sent out a, uh, like a newsletter they send out.
Yeah, I think it was labeled, don't let this happen to your town, but anyway.
Something like that, and they'll, they'll, no, but they'll, they'll explain, maybe Charlie's just saying Georgetown's growth only, but I thought you. It's the state law, I thought, I thought you could s- sell it.
They're gonna sell it in Newburyport, the guy that's, that's.
Yeah, but he's probably just asked to do growth only, but I think you could dispense it. They can't permit, uh, prohibit you from dispensing.
He, he particularly wanted to grow it, but other people might wanna sell it, so they're gonna end up having to deal with it.
Now, we can still get that traffic light back up there, right? On the intersection of uh, School Street, Federal Way.
Separate lane.
Yeah, you got it, we're gonna need it. Gonna need it, there he is, he's over there going, oh my god, you better get the traffic counters out.
Call me too, I'll try.
Okay, good.
I'm not sure which lane you're gonna hit first, the MJ or the donuts, so you have them ready, or do you have to go back?
They might have a newsletter out on it, and they'd send out reports on stuff like that.
All right, uh, what, what else? I'm losing my train of thought, we had a list, a list of.
We haven't had a levity at a meeting in a long time.
Master plan. I gave, I, I emailed Andrea what files I had on a disk, but uh, someone didn't open, so I gave her the disk. The hard disk that Nancy had on her desk of the master plan, so hopefully she'll be able to open all the files. And uh, and she'll be uh, going over that to delete outdated things and whatever, and get back to us on that.
How's the response been from the other boards, have they given you any updates?
Oh, I, fortunately I just was at another meeting, CPA meeting, and I told people I'd be in contact with them soon. So everybody's expecting to hear from me.
Wow, they're doing good, a two tape night.
But I've been on hold.
I'm not doing a Nixon night.
No, surprisingly, we haven't stopped the tape at all.
No, I mean, just re-record over.
I've still got a hundred and twenty-six minutes left.
On that one, okay.
Uh, what else are we gonna talk about, huh?
I don't know.
Well, what about the dirty bookstores, you put them in back?
We're gonna need another lane, how many, how many directional arrows can you stick up there? I'm sure our lane's gonna be activated when you're away.
Yeah, that's gonna be a high, this zoning, that's.
It's not gonna be cheap.
No, maybe.
Yeah, that's why we gotta get some, you gotta do, I would prefer the overlay because you, you start, you start including the zones and, and all the individual zones and what you can do, you just.
I know, it's just, you know, I mean, you're favoring one versus others and that, and it's, it's the problem.
I think to control the area, Jim's way would be better. But that's a long process.
That is humongous. And, and then you might hear from I five that says, hey, I, I don't wanna be in the zone, uh, keep me the way I am. You know, Chesterton, Chesterton doesn't wanna drive through, even if it has a donut shop. Well, Chesterton is right behind the school, so we don't want that.
That's why I'm saying it's almost like.
Didn't we put something in there?
Down where Kenny's was, you know. You're not causing any problems at all.
Didn't we put like five hundred feet or something like that from the school? Didn't we put a number in there?
I think the state has laws that you have to abide by nothing, no drug sales and stuff like that with an X amount of feet.
Yeah, I, I thought we talked about that, there was a distance marker involved.
We had an office.
Which is how we came up with where to go anyway, I think we had a big discussion.
Alcohol permit does a distance marker from school, five hundred feet, I think.
Yeah, and it's five hundred for paint uh, and fumes uh, from schools too and daycare and elderly. With the board of health, so there are distances on certain things, yeah.
No distance if you're painting in the school, but.
Here we go with the wheel of those, school and Salem Street, oh, then red line across the street, you know, this way.
On, on another matter, Bob Daniels, uh, his son Steve. Uh, was supposed to come in, I guess, their house that had an in-law, they're gonna, uh, right. They're gonna stay on the same footprint and, and do away with the in-law, he had a sign off, but he didn't come in, I told him.
Yeah, talked to him about that, briefed him on that, it's just a building permit sign off, so. Uh, we should, you know what, if it comes in late, we should vote to sign that off, let's throw a motion up for that one, cause it's just a building permit sign off that we do anyway. So uh, motion to uh, endorse the building permit for uh, Steve Daniels when he comes in.
So motion, second.
All in favor, is it gonna say an a? Show the book name, and they'll just get a copy. Yeah, the, the way we normally do that, which is standard that we do for anyone that's in a building permit. What else?
Think that's it for now.
Do you think we can get Krispy Kreme?
We need to set another meeting. You missed it, but uh, the mellow rubbish.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, they uh, there was a pit, I think. Fifteenth, no, for an ice cream and uh, sandwich shop. It said ninth thirty-six, I think it did, but I, I'm not sure, they own property on the other side. So I'm not sure which one it is.
The Dons?
Oh, okay.
Dons moving? Oh, he's moving across the way?
No, no, it's not gonna do that any longer, I guess.
Really? But, put a lot of money into that. I was kinda wondering about that, what, what happened?
I don't know.
You can't do seasonal, that's the problem, it's really hard to do that, you know, you gotta just like restart every year.
And craft check came in before you got in, we went over everything, the bullet points of what he did. And uh, he's gonna come back with a uh, he's gonna meet all the requests and then come back with the uh, definitive.
Are we still on the prement?
The only concern we had is Bob knows is the drainage.
Right, on the side?
No, coming out the, on Seventh Star.
Yeah, on the side to the road with the.
Be underground there.
Because Seventh Star itself is maxed out, a good storm, then water comes out of the catch bases, it's further down.
Now, how would you eliminate that, would you, what, what kind of substructure do we have there, do you have a twelve inch, fourteen, twenty?
It's only twelve inch pipe.
Oh, it's only twelve?
Where it dumps out to is large, because he put, Bob put it in years ago as, you know, thirty-six inch. But it's, it's way down the street, so all the way down the hill, the water's really running down the street. Because it comes out of the catch bases.
I suppose it would make sense to put like a forty-four into a twelve.
Up there, no, because it would make it worse, there'd be more coming down all at once to the little one and everything will surface.
It'd almost be, we were talking with the engineer, maybe have a retention uh, like a.
Drywell?
Drywell.
And where, on either side?
Both sides.
Both sides, that'll work, how deep? Twenty?
I don't know, something, he said he'd get the, you know, the calculations with how much water does come down and. Woody's the one that brought it up too, because they wanted to hook into my system. We don't do that much now, we just do overflow now, we like, like if it's coming out of a pond.
Here, here's a silly question, um, if the drainage is on that side. So, what's that, the east side of uh, Seven Star? So the east side of Seven Star, and let's say there was a twelve inch that's running down there on that side. If where this drive cuts in, if you took the drain pipe. And dumped it into, let's say, uh, I don't know how many, uh, how big that would have to be. Ten foot by ten foot by twenty deep drywall, would that help some of the drainage in sense?
It would if the soil was sandy or anything, but it's all ledge up in that area and the water tables high.
But if you're digging a pit.
Right, but if it can't drain and percolate, even with the drywall with the perforated and the stone all around. Once that gets full and it doesn't have time to dissipate.
What about a frac?
Fracture in the ground around it, right?
Cause that would break it up.
Depends on how, how deep before it hits the perma crust.
It was just a curiosity question more than anything else, if that would help, and, and so, and that would take some of the relief off the existing catch basins from overflowing. If they're gonna put in a drywall, then, you know, do a break in one of the pipes and sweep it in there. Um, and that would slow it down a little bit, and then raise, bring the pipe up back to gray level, so then, when it picked up, it would, it would go back the other way. I'm sure you guys all know about that, but. But if this ledge in there, the best way to do that is to frac it to give it an exit point. And that wouldn't take much, right, if you're doing a small drywall.
More money than they got.
Well, I don't know. Couple of, couple of M eighties in there and see what happens.
Oh, yeah.
He's not really increasing the width of the driveway. He's not really increasing the width of the, you know.
Uh, no, he's only using it, what, three feet, I think.
But if he's doing a drywall and the pipe's right there, you know, maybe you can help him with the corner. You know, if you helped, if the town helped, cause we got an existing water problem there, right?
No.
No.
We don't have the problem, it's.
I thought you said they overflow sometimes.
Well, because of the, the street.
Right, right, that's what I mean.
It's maxed out, the pipe's maxed out.
Right, so, so if the town.
So he wants to add more to it.
Right, so, so how about if it would be a joint effort to relieve, to do both, is that something that's up your alley? Cause that would, if you're doing, if he's tying into that system or coming near that system and it, we could relieve the system, then it would be a shared.
They would, we'd left it, then maybe come up with some sort of drywall.
Okay. All right, um, meeting notice, uh, do we need to be back in two weeks?
Yeah, we should, we should do two meetings a month.
Okay, so it's January twenty eighth.
Next week?
Uh, no, two weeks, it's fourteen. Today is one, fourteen, fourteen.
I can't do that one.
You can't do fourteenth or the twenty?
Twenty eighth, I can do the next one. Unless we make it on another day besides Tuesday, I can make.
I'm available any night, second, second Monday until.
You wanna do twenty nine, or you wanna do Wednesday?
Yeah, that's fine.
Wednesday, Wednesday, Wednesday?
January twenty ninth?
Yep.
What should I put on the agenda, are we gonna talk about the zoning again or?
I think we gotta keep talking about it.
Just keep zoning running, running, running agenda, cause it'll be uh.
Yeah, we'll talk, we'll, we'll talk to town council, we'll try to, uh, by that time you get some information.
And you are gonna contact Lisa.
Lisa, get that disc.
And um. Who's gonna contact the uh, zoning board to set up joint meetings?
You know anybody on there? Yeah, that was you and Slickman.
Yeah, all right.
We can do it when we go, then they.
Okay.
Because the gentleman that's on the board lives on Waika, and he joined my gang club.
Who's that?
McDonald.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you really should go through that chairman, you know, who's still chairman, I think.
Oh, really? The CBA chairman chairman? The new guy?
All right, we'll, we'll run it through the head person.
Yeah, because I hate to say it, I mean, he, he got two groups. You know, I mean, you wanna kinda pull them together first and then set them down, that's all.
No, I, I forget, oh, Paul, what's his name, Paul?
That sounds familiar, that's on one of these.
Chairman of the zone?
Yeah, Wade, yeah, Tom Wade.
Yeah, well, we can get a hold of him.
Yeah.
Yeah, he lives in.
And, not in, uh, Georgia.
Yeah, Georgia. Oh, yeah, did anything come to that situation? Whitestone?
Oh, uh, that's gotta be on the agenda, most of those people are in Florida right now, so we still.
Traffic's low.
We still need to talk to Pat Skinner to get him to come to a meeting. We need representatives from their association and us and working with Pat and. It just, nothing's gelling with the emergencies that. And now the weather, the season, so we need to schedule that after the one.
July?
Yeah, I guess so.
So, we'll hit them in between the uh. Well, you know, when they come back and the weather's good, before they take off for summer vacation.
Yeah, but I'm glad you reminded me of that, it's just been raining dormant.
And assuming I have the document I need.
Okay.
I would like to get.
Good.
A very productive two-take meeting.
Before we adjourn, Bob, you need to leave, cause I'm gonna just talk about.
Good night everyone.
I'm going with him.
You're gonna keep that book?
Hey, what, hey, what's the bridge update? Any bridge updates?
It's open.
Geez, I hope so, I've driven over it much, um. No.
You want to show the door?
No.
All right, so what do you have, is these the pictures?
These are pictures from the uh, eight house subdivision, uh, Groveland Fairways from October, every stage. Up till we put down the binder coat. At the uh, a couple days before the big storm, all that, that looks high, but it's not. Because they're gonna fill in where the houses go up and then when you get the curve and stuff. But that was before we put in two feet of gravel in the roadside and everything, and the hot top and everything.
Is it a pop-up hydrant, you push on it and it comes out, in case you can't find it with a snowbank?
That's manholes and sewer and catch bases and. And I made sure they compacted all around them and they cemented the joints.
I see that. So what's the um, my stream line, so what, what's the uh, synopsis of the whole thing, I see stages.
Well, we're at binder state now, and he put up ten thousand dollars in a bond.
For a hole?
For two cellar holes, they haven't done that.
How's the uh?
They're putting in the electric uh, right now down the sidewalk side. They already got the gas in. And these are the trees that were planted for the gentleman.
That's it? Excuse me, what's that, T base?
Yeah. Besides the twenty inches of T base we required. He put in two feet more because of the cut that was there, so we actually have like four feet of T base, which is.
How, how'd you compact it?
I had them compacted in four inch lifts.
It was been out there forever. How many ton roller?
Uh, they had a vibratory roller that was twenty ton with a vibratory. Now, everything was done proper, they did a good job. It's near the last, good. And I made them use a uh, what they call a tight binder. And it's, it's, I know, a dense binder where it's not big stones that unravel through the winter. So I made them use that and it's, it will last longer and everything.
It's like three eighths or quarter inch?
Yeah, three eighths, yeah. All right, so everything's going good, and the key to those on file here is for.
This is an envelope?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, motion to um, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.